All right, it is 6:00 PM, so we are going to get started. I want to welcome people who are here live at the St. Joseph County Public Library's Layton Auditorium and those who may be watching by livestream at home to this series of district debates. These are debates featuring the candidates who are running for contested seats that are based in specific districts on the South Bend Common Council. And we are delighted that all of the candidates facing a contest this primary season have agreed to participate. We will go in order of districts, so up first will be Kenneth Lee and Nick Hammond. All right, we are going to have a similar format for each of the five debates this evening, and that will be a brief one-minute opening statement, a series of policy questions, and an opportunity for them to talk a little bit about issues that matter to them and their districts, and then finally 30-second closing statements allowing them to tell you as voters why they deserve your vote. And for District One, we will start first with Mr. Lee.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and all of you that are here today. My name is Kenneth Lee. I'm a 46-year resident of the First District. I'm a homeowner. I'm a pastor in the neighborhood, in the community, and for the last three years, I have finished the term for Tim Scott. Did not anticipate a pandemic and social unrest and all of the things that we have had to endure, but we've been able to work with the mayor and with the community to step right in and to continue to lead the First District in a positive way. We've made a lot of strides in public safety, the Citizen Reboard, and we've also had some development that has happened. And most importantly, I want to see our district thrive, and we are cleaning up the Drury's Brewery site, and we're also working together to bring resources to the neighborhood. $600 million has been introduced into our First District, and we're looking forward to the progress, looking forward to the progress and continuing the work.
Thank you. Now, your opening statement, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you. My name is Nick Hammond. I'm running for the first time for the First District of South Bend. I was born and raised here. We grew up near Northwest and then later in the Bull Run Park area. Went to school at Hoy Cross St. Joe and then later graduated Notre Dame. The real reason I'm running here is I really believe that the First District needs, and the Common Council needs leaders that are connected to the city and the working class and less connected to them, you know, to the city itself. And so I'm running, you know, to build affordable housing in the First District. I'm here to run to build safer, more tight-knit communities here, and I'm here to really be connected and work hard for the First District. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We now go to questions for the candidates, so each have one minute to answer plus a 30-second rebuttal if desired from the candidate who responded first. The first question will go to you, Mr. Hammond. Based on your conversations with voters, what is the top priority issue for people in your district, and how will you address it?
Well, I mean, as we've witnessed, we've seen a large fight by the time here in South Bend, and so that's number one when I'm going door-to-door. And I've been door-to-door a lot, like I've been to 3,000 doors, and, you know, you hear a lot of different things. But it all comes down to people do not feel safe in their communities. They feel like things are getting better, but they feel like it's being spotted. And so while this Blackberry Street might have nice sidewalks, this one might not. And they're wondering, why is that? And I think the reason is we're not really connected as a city as a whole, and so while we can kind of have these site progress in these areas, you know, people on the, you know, when they're on the ground, they're like, well, I don't see it here. And so what I need to do is connect with the progress we've seen in certain parts of the city and connect that all around so that everybody's included in the progress.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Yes. For 21 years, I've been a pastor in the city, lived in the First District. I live on 1900 Blight of Huey Street, so I'm right in the middle of everything. The first thing is public safety, and that's why I voted for the police raises so that we can go from 197 police officers to 248. And that's also why I voted to make sure that opportunity, curbs and sidewalks and lighting are happening in the area. So we've been working and voting on things that will help to bring development into the neighborhood, sewer lateral reimbursement plans so that we can have affordable housing in the area, and we've been working with the NNN and Mike King to transform that area.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, I mean, one thing I would just rebut with is, you know, in a lot of this, and it's not a bad thing, teamwork is good, but I heard we, 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 we. When the city councilman is not only a vote, like you're a leader, you're the leader of that district. And so we need to have somebody who's going to lead on an issue. I'm going to lead on affordable housing. I'm going to lead on this. And I think that's what we've been lacking here in the First District so far.
You were mentioned directly, and I think you can probably work it into your response here, which is what you are running in a contested primary election, what differentiates you from your opponent, and why should people vote for you?
The reason why people should vote for me and what makes me different is I live in the inner city. I work in the inner city. I've been there for 21 years, 46 years, all of my life, I've lived in the First District. When we talk about what we want to do and what we can do, I can say what I have to. And I have worked together because you have to work with individuals within the leadership, within the city, and with the city chiefs. You have to work with everybody in order to get things accomplished, and we've been able to get things accomplished, and we're looking forward to getting more, more things accomplished in the district.
Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the big things is really just the commitment and the commitment to be connected and work hard on a very personal level to the needs of the people of the district. And I think the we, like teamwork is good, and it's not to say that everything is going wrong with the city. What it means is that people want to see real, like what's a realistic view of the thing? They don't want to hear sunshine and puppies, that this is not true, like they see it in front of their eyes. And so as a First District person, we need to be real with them and say, here's where we're at, here's what we can do going forward, and I'm going to be connected the whole way and be accountable for that progress. And so I think that's really the biggest difference.
Mr. Lee?
For four and a half years, I was the director, and I worked directly with Regina and Susan Mitchell. So I was on the front line, getting calls in the middle of the night, going to the shootings, and helping families get through the hardest times in their lives. So when you talk about being connected, I have been connected, I have helped people, and I continue to help people.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Mr. Hammond. Every candidate running for municipal office talks about investing in our neighborhoods, but what does that mean? What specific steps will you take to invest in your district and the city as a whole? Please be specific about specific plans and programs you will promote to make a difference.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think one of the big things you have to do in, you know, one thing we need to commend the city in ways, there is a commitment to build more housing. I think one of the problems if you're defining sort of what affordable housing is on a kind of a higher level than what is in like most of the First District, then there's like a real problem because there's a disconnect. Because we're not building affordable housing for each part of the city, but kind of there's affordable housing for like downtown, right? Which is affordable compared to like when I lived in Chicago, it's not that affordable for a lot of people here. And so we need to build, we need to direct more programs, whether it's more public-type partnerships, we need to get people in the Housing Authority, we need public housing, we need to find ways to like build, like maintain grants for existing housing stock, which is a ton in my district. And so those are some of the things we need to do and be more creative about how we're going to actually meet that gap, because otherwise, we're not going to meet that gap.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, same question, to use specific steps you'll take to invest in your district and the city's neighborhoods?
One of the things you've got to do with advocacy, so with the Drury's Brewery, from day one when I came into office, I was asking the mayor about Drury's every week to the item of it. And we found a partnership with the federal government to get it resolved. And so after 50 years, $4.5 million is going to be spent to remediate the Drury's Brewery. When you talk about affordable housing, we've got to connect with the Housing Authority, have a great relationship with Housing Authority, work with them very closely, and they're one of the biggest landlords in our city. And so when we talk about affordable housing, that's one of the ways that we can do it. And then also, when you talk about streets, sort of curbs and sidewalks and violence, we have to be involved with knowing what residents want, and I've been on the front lines doing the work.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond, 30 seconds?
Oh, no, just a second.
All right, we'll move on to the next question. Some candidates running in South Bend's municipal elections have focused primarily on the progress the city has made in population growth, new jobs, new development, and public projects, such as signature projects like the renovation of Howard Park. Other candidates tend to focus more on problems the city faces, like a limited supply of affordable housing, relatively high homicide rate, people living in poverty or facing homelessness. Which comes closer to your view is the glass half-empty or half-full, Mr. Lee?
I think we have to look at, we have to be realistic and look at the problems that our city has, but we also have to speak of where we want our city to go. And so as we're going forward, I'm looking at what we have accomplished, what could have happened in South Bend during the pandemic, and how we were able to steadily work together to bring the city to a better place. But then you also have to look at what's going on in our neighborhoods and knowing what the people in our neighborhood need and what they're desiring and bringing those things to pass. So with housing, there's plans available that people can buy, you know, I mean, get for free. With curbs and sidewalks, that's important to people. People want to be able to ride their bikes down the sidewalks. And so I've been able to provide that for the residents of the First District, and I'll keep providing if I'm elected on their side.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, obviously, like both are true, right? We've made progress, and then there's still these enormous problems. And I think that's part of what people in the First District, when I'm talking to them, they want the acknowledgement, what's realistic, and where are we going to go from here? But I don't think anybody that I'm talking to will admit that we haven't stagnated in areas during the last few years. I think everybody can, like, most people I go around, don't, that's not a disagreeable statement. So the question is, okay, where do we need to pick things up again? Why is like the inequality rising in our city? Why is the black and white, like, housing, like, how is that, like, skyrocketed, the difference between who's a homeowner? Like, that's a problem. And so if you're a working-class person in the city and you can't afford rent, you know, things look a lot worse than if you're a homeowner whose property is valued at the true over the last 15 years. So we're not speaking to everybody in the city, and that's the disconnect. And I've seen it in every city that I've lived in, and I've seen it here, and I've seen it like grow here. And so I think you have to be realistic, but also admit and give people goodwill for the progress they're making.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Yes, you have to take advantage of the programs. There's a lot of banks that are offering homeownership programs. There are a lot of ways that, the city offers some programs for homeownership. So we have to get our people educated on how to become a homeowner, how to get their credit together so that they can become a homeowner, how to get a job that's not just a job, but a career. So all of those things are things that I've worked in with Goodwill to help people get in a better position.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Mr. Hammond. In your view, how safe is our city? What additional steps need to be taken to improve public safety, reduce homicides, and make people in the safety, including residents in your district, feel safe?
Well, I mean, it's safe than, less safe than it was. Like, less safe than it was, like, if you've got any time period, go back five years, 10 years, you know, it's less safe now than it is in the past. Now, is everything the problem with the city administration that causes violence that's happened everywhere? No. But we're not exactly doing the right things here. We're investing more into like technology and like other things that are these like silver bullet ideas that aren't actually community-related, and what we're not doing and what we see in, you know, in the progressive communities that are like making a difference on crime, you have to spend on social programs. You have to really invest in neighborhoods. You have to invest in the working class. You have to invest in poor kids. You have to invest in mental health. It's all these things that all come together, along with policing, that can create a safe city, but we're not seeing like the full attempt of it.
Mr. Lee?
Well, we have to, first of all, I always say this, we have to start at home. What will make our city safe is what has to happen in the home. Of course, investing in the police department to get our city fully staff, that was important because that allow things to not be overlooked like they have been with a short-staffed police department. But then also, things like the Real Time Crime Center, these are tools to help us. And then GDI and different social programs that are working in the community. I've been in the schools mentoring kids, trying to impart the kids a better way of living, and those are the things that's going to help make the city safe. It's not just from the administration, it's from the home, it's from the people.
30 seconds?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll get to this the other night, I think. Yeah, no, let's get to that.
All right, we'll go next to Mr. Lee. What is one issue you think people in your district should be thinking more about when they head to polls on May 2nd, something we haven't discussed yet tonight?
Oh, yeah, interesting. We've got to think about what we want to see our First District be. I grew up in the First District. I knew when Martin's Plaza was booming, I knew that when there was Burgatory and Mr. Fresh and all of those places, we need to think about how do we re-energize Portage and Elwood and continue to spread that throughout the other areas. We've got great investment in the First District with businesses relocating here. Place Candy built an $8-million factory. McCormick's is expanding, Tri-Pac is expanding, Coop's Wagner is expanding, so we've got opportunities for expansion. I want to create First District jobs with First District workers. And so as we begin to work further, we got to teach people how to have a career.
Mr. Hammond?
So, you know, the First District is great, and I love it, and it's my home, and I wouldn't have thought of living anywhere else in the city. But we have a long way to go, and so, you know, we have to work really hard, and it's going to take all of us, it's going to take a lot of commitment, because it's not going to happen just, you know, with the momentum that we have now. And so I want you to know who's been to your door in this election, who's going to show up to the meeting four years from now, who's going to show up when you ask again and again and again, and who's going to rally other people in the cause? And who's committed to the working class? Who's committed to the marginalized? Who's committed to the homeless? And I think that's who we want, and that's who we need for us to all succeed in this year.
Mr. Lee, 30 seconds?
And that would be me. I'm that person who's been doing it for the last 21 years. That's, I'm the person that does it every day when I walk out of my doors. I'm trying to make South Bend a better place, and you have to work together. My campaign is Together We Can, and that's not just a campaign statement, it's a way of life.
So you each raise a different topic if you have the 30 seconds, if I don't let you know?
Yeah, I mean, I hope to be reelected with more than eight people, so I mean, this time, that's just what we're going to do. I need everybody to come out on May 2nd, I need everybody to vote for me, and we're going to turn the First District around. It can be better than this.
All right, well, that leads us to our closing statements, and the first closing statement is from Mr. Hammond.
So my name is Nick Hammond. I'm running for the first time for the First District of South Bend. This is a really important election on our hands. This is probably the most exciting election we've had since my lifetime. We have candidates who are committed to working for everybody, and that's something that we really haven't seen in a long time. We have young people that are committed to working with the multiracial, multi-class working coalition. So everyone come out, May 2nd or before, and vote for, vote for me for the First District, and make your mind up on everything else. Thank you.
All right, and the last word goes to you, Mr. Lee.
My name is Kenneth Lee. I took over when Tim Scott stepped down. Our First District needed leadership, and I was able to step in and continue to push forward the things that needed to be done in our First District. I am hoping that you all have seen my work, you've seen what I've done, and know that I'm committed to the First District and to the community. We've got a lot of great progress, we're on the cusp of some great things happening, and if we can just continue the progress, continue to do the work, we can see the development that we want to see in First District. We've seen housing, we've seen businesses, and we've seen the landscape change, and I want to continue to work to bring those resources and those things back to the First District and make it the best district, because we're number one.
All right, thank you to both of our candidates. All right, they started things out very well, and it's not always easy to go first. So now the others have an idea of what this looks like. We move on to District Two, Jordan Geiger and Ophelia Gooden-Rodgers. Okay, we will start with one-minute opening statements, and Mr. Geiger will go first.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jordan Geiger, and I'm a candidate for the Common Council District Two. I'm endorsed by Henry Davis Jr., who's the current seat holder, and also by Regina Williams-Preston, who's the previous seat holder. My family's lived in the district for over 80 years, and I've been thoroughly committed to advocating for the district since in the six and a half years that I've been back in South Bend. I say that in my work, my record speaks for itself. In my time back in South Bend, my organizing work, I was instrumental in getting established a West Side Home Repair Program that was concentrated in District Two. I also, through my organization, Black Lives Matter, we donated 5,000 masks to the empowerment zone, which covers pretty much all of the West Side schools. Also, I co-authored the reparations resolution with Councilman Henry Davis Jr. And then my work was, I was instrumental also in getting established the first-ever racial wealth divide study in South Bend history. So I think I've been a consistent advocate for the district, and I'm calling and asking for your vote, because a vote for me is a vote for a better and more equitable South Bend.
Thank you. Ms. Gooden-Rodgers?
Good evening. My name is Ophelia Gooden-Rodgers, and I am running for councilperson for Second District. I am running because Second District needs to change. All the people that have been running in Second District have done nothing. I'm just going to be plain, tell you the truth. Second District needs work. Second District needs people to come out and want to work. Second District has been looked over long enough. We need to get Second District up and running. Second District shall become the best district there is. I heard somebody say earlier, it's going to be number one, but Second District can take over the number one spot.
All right, Mr. Geiger, you mentioned you were endorsed by those candidates, attractive rebuttal?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen the good work that Regina and Henry have both done. We're seeing more investment in housing in the district over the last few years than we've seen really in my lifetime. I know that you're endorsed by Charlotte Clapper, who was twice voted out or not reelected. But when I was a young person, the district was really in shambles. The streets were disprepared, there was trash everywhere, there was drugs and crime and a lack of lighting. And in my lifetime, since Henry and Regina have been on the council, a lot has changed. So I'm not really sure what you mean by that, but I mean, if you look at their record, you can clearly see that they brought a lot of good to the district.
And Ms. Gooden-Rodgers, I think you'll be able to address that in your next, respond to the next question, which says you are running in a contested election. What differentiates you from your opponent, and why should people vote for you?
What difference means I'm a homeowner. I own my home, and I know what it takes to build a home. I know what it takes to run a home. I've also had some great endorsements too. IBEW, UAW Local Five, Reverend Miller. Endorsements are people that just come out and say that they feel you would do a good job. But if you go through the Second District and you start to look at our parks, look at our side roads, everything is just filthy. It needs to be cleaned up. So if all this progress has been going on in the past, why does it look like this now? It's just a repeated buildup.
Mr. Geiger, why should people vote for you?
Well, I think the voters in Second District should support maybe to continue to move the district forward. Again, if you look at the work of Henry and Regina, we've seen record levels of investment in the parks, actually. We have a whole new Charles Black Center, we're building a new MLK Center. We actually have more support for the neighborhood organizations. So I advocated for our neighborhood associations to actually get funding from the city to be able to carry out some of the beautification programs that people have been asking for, including picking up trash and litter. If, I've worked alongside many of the neighborhood association leaders, and they have not been able to receive resources from the city, such as bags, funding for pickers to pick up the trash. So now they have the ability, they have $10,000 grants that have come to them because of the work that we have done in the Second District.
Ms. Gooden-Rodgers, 30 seconds?
Well, these bags and all this stuff that we're talking about in the Second District, they haven't been used, because all you have to do is go down any of our streets, especially outside streets. Western Avenue is a beautiful place, but if you come to the side streets, you will see how dirty it is. We need leadership in the Second District. Leadership means get out there and go to work yourself if you need to, show the people that you care, show the people that you want to be involved with them.
Thank you. Mr. Geiger, all of the candidates running this year are talking a lot about investing in our neighborhoods. What specific steps will you take to invest in your district and the city as a whole?
Yeah, so I've been very clear that I believe that we need to invest in the Housing Authority. As was mentioned earlier, the Housing Authority is the largest affordable housing provider in the city. I know that based on my conversations with Dr. Lambert, who's the director, that she needs about $12 million in investment from the city. And so I support a plan put forward by Henry Davis Jr. to invest in our Housing Authority. I also believe that we need to implement inclusionary zoning laws, something that has been implemented in Portland. And so what that requires is a 35% set aside for low-to-moderate income units, and then for those developers who don't want to build affordable housing units, they should have to pay what may be considered a fee that can go into an affordable housing fund, and I think that should be set at about $20,000, because we know we need 6,000 units of affordable housing in the city.
Thank you. Ms. Gooden-Rodgers?
Well, when it comes to housing, everybody that come up here tonight is going to talk about housing. We know we need housing, but what we need is affordable housing. We need housing that low-income people can afford to move into and maintain. Also, while we're building these houses, while we're getting these houses, in my travel of my campaign, I see a lot of houses that maybe the city could buy, or maybe the city could loan money to someone that wants to invest in owning homes, and then they fix them up, and then they rent them out to the low-income people. We have houses, we just need to make sure that we use the money to fix the houses up.
Mr. Geiger, 30 seconds?
I mean, yeah, I agree with her. I mean, the city has very healthy reserves. We have $200 million in a first source investment account. I think we need to spend down our reserves and invest in repairing homes. When I work with Regina Williams-Preston, we actually push for a home repair program to help our seniors, because elders like mine, like my grandfather, who worked, you know, for a bigger salary, they weren't able to afford a people in their homes. And so when those homes are passed down to their descendants, they also didn't have the money to repair those homes. And most of the homeownership in our, in our community is in the hands of our seniors. And so we need to continue with home repair. We invested $1.1 million into improving folks' homes, so I'm going to continue forward that work.
Thank you. Ms. Gooden-Rodgers, you've talked a lot about problems in the district. It seems like candidates are either focused a lot on problems or a lot on progress. Would you say that you're focused mostly on problems? And how do you see the current state of your district, but also of the city?
Well, the city, the city in whole, I think is doing a pretty good job. But what we need to work on, we need to work on our crime factor. Crime is pretty much on the West End. Crime is also everywhere, but pretty much the West End. The West End needs help. We need more training. People need to understand what causes crime. Poverty, low housing, no food. Look, there's no grocery stores on the West Side. We need things over there to make people want to be involved. We need centers for our children. We need Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. We need the public to come out, work with the children. We need a family again. We need to also make sure that what one family does, the next one can do too. Let's come out and work in Second District.
Mr. Geiger, you've talked about progress in the Second District. As you think about the district and the city as a whole, do you see more problems, progress, or a mix of them?
Yeah, I mean, I would say there's a mix of both. I mean, I definitely have seen progress in the time that I've been here, mainly because of the advocacy that has come out of the Second District. mainly because of the advocacy that has come out of the Second District. A lot of the programs and games that folks have been touting about are, have come as a result of the work that we've been doing in the Second District. As it relates to the issue of crime, I mean, I agree with them. I think it is out of control. But we gotta take a different approach to reduce the crime. Even as the city has fully staffed its police department, we are still seeing record levels of homicides and shootings in the district. I was speaking with someone recently and they said, over the span of four days, there were two hundred and something shots, right? So we need to do something different. Faith in Indiana had put forward a program or these mentor fellowships. I agree with them. I think we need to implement programs like that. We need to be finding a different way of approaching people who are suspected shooters and offer them alternatives to violence and crime.
Thank you. Ms. Gooden Rogers, thirty seconds.
I would like to say that yes, crime is a problem, but crime is everywhere. We need to revitalize our neighborhood watches. Our neighborhood watch, once the people get involved and we have these neighborhood watches going on, then crime can slow down because now people will be paying attention. Now you know that this is gonna be a good neighborhood, people paying attention, you're gonna go sell your drugs and stuff somewhere else. A bad neighborhood where there's no lighting, where there's people are not productive, that's where your crime is gonna settle in. So once the neighborhood watches form, crime will slow down if we all work together.
Mr. Geiger, you mentioned the fact that the South Bend Police Department was fully staffed for the first time in a long time and also we might go increasingly diverse. Is that a step in the right direction and can you talk more about what you think needs to happen to make people feel safe?
Yeah, I don't think that it's an issue with the staffing levels of the, of the police department. I think that we need to invest in our communities. We need to invest in the, in the people of South Bend. We need to be asking, where do these guns come from? These young people are not producing manufactured guns. Over the last eight months, I've been doing work with an organization called Global Exchange, where we've been fighting against gun trafficking. We've been talking about the need to ban assault weapons. And so what I personally feel that we need to do is we actually need to have, we need to do more gun tracing work here. The South Bend Police Department often talks about how many guns they've recovered over the last year, but they're not telling us where these guns are coming from. There's a Chicago gun trace report that was produced, I think about a year and a half ago. And they actually found that out of the top ten gun dealers where these guns were sourced from that were recovered in homicide cases in Chicago, two of them came from Indiana. We need to know where our guns are coming from. I also believe that we need to do what they're doing in Baltimore, Maryland. In Baltimore, they actually implemented a tax on bullets. And we can use the money, and it's a graduated tax, we can use the money that's generated from that tax to fund organizations that are doing gun violence prevention work.
Thank you. Ms. Gooden Rogers.
Well, I don't know about all these other places, what they're doing. I'm gonna deal with Indiana as your councilperson. What I'm gonna ask for is I'm gonna ask that now that the police department is, is fully staffed, now our police can get out and do foot patrols, okay? Because once you get to know that you know Sergeant such and such, you can become his friend. You can also help him out by letting him know what's going on in your neighborhood. The more foot patrols we have, the more police we see on, well, they call boots on the ground, once we see that. People want that kind of protection. People want that kind of friendliness. People want to help out. So, fully staffed, let's get our, our police out on foot patrol.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Geiger.
Yeah, I think we need to reduce the number of calls that our officers respond to. I participated in the action group meetings after the murder of Eric Lowman. And I listened to an officer talk about how stressed out she was because she got to respond to a cat in some tree or a woman, elderly woman dying in her home and then a shooting down the street. So a lot of our officers are overworked. They're stressed. And so again, that's why I'm saying we need to take a different approach. In cities like Newark, New Jersey, they actually have unarmed public safety workers who go out into the streets to respond to calls where a police presence is needed. So we just need to reimagine what public safety looks like.
Thank you. Ms. Gooden Rogers, the South Bend Community School Corporation recently released its plan to consolidate the schools. What do you think, do you think that's a step in the right direction and what's the path forward and how can members of the council help?
Well, the school board is an entity of its own, okay? It's run up under this thing. So the council can only do whatever the school board asks. They cannot just go in and take over. The school board and the council can work together. Maybe we can get a liaison from the council to go and work with the school board. But for its education, that's why we have an elected school board. Sure, we all want to see things stay the way that they are, but things change. So we're gonna have to better our education. We're gonna let the school board make that decision and wherever the council falls in to help out, that's what we will do.
Mr. Geiger.
Yeah, upon assuming office, I plan to introduce legislation, a resolution that calls for firing of Todd Cummins. He's not qualified for the position he lied or was in. Clearly, the residents of South Bend are not happy with his leadership. We also need to implement more after-school programming for our young people. We don't have enough robust programming to make sure that young people, when they get home, that they have resources at their neighborhood recreational centers. Even now, the, the schools, I worked as a middle school teacher, we couldn't even give our kids homework. I mean, that made absolutely no, no sense to me. And that's largely because a lot of the parents, because they came up in a failed school system, they weren't able to do the secondary algebra. And so we need to create after-school programming that we, so that we can support students and families.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Gooden Rogers.
I work at the school system, so I see what's going on every day. And I see that the kids, they need help. We have after-school programs, but the children are not participating. There's problems with getting rides. So first we need to do, we need to get some buses. We need to get people hired that wanna come and work with the children. Children cannot learn if they do not have the help. Their help is not here. While parents are at home or maybe they're not working, maybe they should come out and also help.
All right, we will go to the last question before closing statements. What one issue do you think people in your district should be thinking more about when they head to the polls on or before May second? Something we haven't discussed yet tonight that is central to your campaign and critical to the future of your district. Mr. Geiger.
Yeah, I think we need to think about the environmental crises that we face in the district. We need more trees. In the district, we have a low tree equity store. And by planting more trees, we can actually repair the soil and the air. Also, we have the issue with lead. A lot of, the average home in my district was built in nineteen fifty-six. And we know that lead poisoning is linked to attention deficit disorders in young people, linked to what is perceived as more violent behavior. So we need to definitely address the lead issues. The city had received around six to seven million dollars between two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. And as of, they had a Public Health Safety Committee meeting in February of two thousand twenty-one, they had only remediated nine homes, right? So we are literally allowed for our children to be poisoned in their homes. And then we wonder why we see the violence that we see.
Ms. Gooden Rogers.
The maintenance program's been going on for a while, so it's being taken care of. What we need in our districts, we need people to work with our children. I don't have all the statistics. What I do know is, I do know that children need help. Children need their own parks. We need parks on the West Side. We need a pool on the West Side. We need after-school programs where children can go and be safe. We need more safe houses. We really do need the help of the people in the Second District.
Thank you. Mr. Geiger, thirty seconds.
I'm ready to move the podium.
All right, well.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying really quick, like, the lead issue is, is serious. It's a real crisis. It has not been properly addressed. The city received millions of dollars to remediate a hundred homes and I'm not even sure twenty-five hundred were remedied. So I, I do think that you need to do more research and know, and know the data.
I, I do know the data and the data means that it's progressing.
All right, let's move now to closing statements and the first closing statement, thirty seconds on the clock, goes to Mr. Geiger.
Yeah, so tonight's debate only further demonstrates why I'm best prepared to represent the district. I have learned from and worked alongside Henry Davis Jr. since I was nineteen years old. He's been elected three times. I'm the great-grandson of Sylvester Buckingham, who moved to the district in the nineteen forties in order to escape Jim Coeur racism in the South. I intimately understand the challenges facing our, our community. Our seniors need to feel safe. We need more affordable housing units. We need to save our youth from violence. We need to plant more non-invasive trees to improve the air and quality, the air and soil quality in the district. We need to remediate lead in homes and stop poisoning our children. And we need to have reparations for passing current harms that have been committed against our people. So I wanna thank you all for giving me your time and your attention. And I look forward to you all joining me and celebrating my victory on this day.
And our last closing statement comes from Ophelia Gooden Rogers.
Like I said before, I don't have all the data. I don't have all the statistics. I have a home. I know what homeowners need. I know that when we come together and we work together, we can make Second District a better place. I also know that no matter what anybody say, I can do the job. I can, once I get in, I can learn those numbers. Numbers are just something that you learn. What you need to be able to do is work with the council to help get things done. I can do that. I have proved my leadership through my union, through my church, through my family. I have proved leadership out here in this community. All we have to do is get someone that's willing to work with and for you all in the Second District. Not using someone else's shoulders to lean on. I'm gonna lean on your shoulder and I'm gonna let you lean on mine. And we gonna get the work in the Second District done that needs to be done.
Thank you so much to both of our candidates for District Two. If you live in District Two, be sure to get out and vote. Thank you, candidates. Up next, District Three candidates Drew Duncan and Sharon McBride. All right, we will start with an opening statement from you, Mr. Duncan. Sixty seconds.
Hello and thank you everybody for joining us tonight. Thank you to the American Democracy Project and Legal Women Voters for having us. My name is Drew Duncan and this run has been created by the last four years of the McBride campaign. She campaigned on public safety. Today, our neighborhoods are less safe. She campaigned on education collaboration, and this was seven years ago. And now our schools are in worse shape than they were when she took office. When Henry decided that he would file a bill to establish a joint commission between the council and our public schools that are crumbling at this moment, this council and the core governing team voted it down. I'm running because our district deserves an independent voice that's competent, that reads the legislation, that comes prepared and doesn't council meetings because they're out of town. I'm running because our district said they wanna fight her and I think through this campaign, I've showed them what this campaign is about and what we're gonna do to the Republicans come November. This campaign, and I'm running because people in our district have a lot to say and you'll find out more than that.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Thank you. Thank you to Legal Women Voters, American Democracy Project, and the South, and the County Lightroom. I'm Sharon McBride, Third District Representative, incumbent and current council president. When I was appointed in two thousand and eighteen and elected in two thousand and nineteen, I hit the ground running. It hasn't stopped since. You listen to my opponent that says that he would do all these things. Well, if you go to the Third District, you'll see that a lot of things have been done. I can talk to my record and let my record speak for itself. The first thing that I did was had a bus tour and Randolph Park, which was not habitable for people to play, now can be called a home in a park that is vibrant. Also worked with having lighting throughout the district, in the Third District. I've developed the master plan with the Neighborhood Association and currently serve on and is present at all of the Neighborhood Associations and have been active ever since. So, when you talk about my record, you can look at the Third District. We have the biggest growth per this last census data in the city that we've had in the city in over fifty years. So my records speak for itself. I'm always present, not just taking pictures and photo ops, but getting the job done.
Thank you. We will go first then to this question, since you've already begun this discussion, which is you are running in a contested primary. What differentiates you from your opponent and why should people vote for you? Mr. Duncan.
Integrity. What I do is say at your door and when I ask for your vote is what I'll do on the council. What we have seen the incumbent do through this primary and since she's taken office has been an embarrassment to the district in our city. From our last public forum where she dropped the N-word, completely inappropriate, to the bully tactics that she takes steamrolling council members on, on, on the council. Her behavior, her, her posturing, her defensiveness to constituents and even an opponent that understands that the real enemy is the Republicans rooting from the county. We have a lot to do in the district and I understand that and I understand we have to engage everyone, not just members of the core governing team, not just members of the Mean Girls Club. We have to have buy-in from citizens, elected officials. Just because I'm not attending every Neighborhood Association and we missed you at the River Park one on the fourteenth. It does still mean that I'm plugged into my district. I live in the southeast neighborhood. We started a community garden and we're gonna continue to work.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. I'm glad that you finally attended one Neighborhood Association meeting in River Park. I've been doing it for the, since two thousand and eighteen. One of the things when you talk about, I've been serving on the Shore Neighborhood Association. I'm a current member, a current member of four sixty-six works. I have been appointed and work on the homelessness task force since two thousand and sixteen and the Behavioral Crisis Center. I am appointed and have been serving in that task, in that capacity. As I stated before, the Third District have grown the fastest increase of twelve percent in all, in all of the districts. I have helped develop the master plan to get United Way Center up and running, that we have a mental health service in there, a pharmacy in there, WIC programs and a community center that people can call home. Again, lighting has been a problem on the southeast side particularly, but we have had more development in, throughout the entire district than any, like the Frankie Saccos, the Walkin Cloud, the R-Bar, Randolph Park Innovations and many more.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan, thirty seconds.
Look, it, it's clear. We can name pockets in the district where money has been spent, but if you've walked through the neighborhoods in the district in a half, there's complete blocks of spaces that we don't have sidewalks. But my opponent sent a mailer out today saying she's tripled the money for the sidewalks. But at the Miami Village Neighborhood Association, where I was, she told the residents that there was nothing that the city could do to increase funding. Again, the last question was what separates us. My opponent is a liar. And she's continued to lie in the city and I intend to bring integrity back to the district to the seed and independence.
I think, I think I am a part of the Miami Neighborhood Association and have been since two thousand and eighteen. And if you walk Randolph Lear Street, you will see new curbs and sidewalks in that district, the same district that we're talking about. Yes, there's a curb and sidewalk allocation that council get every year. We're not the decider of where those allocations go. It is priority submitted to the engineering department and they go out and make those decisions. So what I do every year is give my allocation away to people in the district who ask for it, who sign up for it. And if there's a priority for an elderly person, they are fast-tracked on their list. Thank you.
I have a mailer right here. Her mailer says double the funding for streets and sidewalks. What she just told you is she can't do that. So what is it?
That's not why I told you if you're here. We have doubled the funding. If you look at the record throughout the city of South Bend, fact-check it.
No, in the district, in the district.
Fact-check it and you will see that my record posts.
I, I've heard you said fact-check. In order to get facts from the city right now, this current administration makes you file a FOIA request.
Take that away, administration. We're talking about the district.
But anyway, so if you are a citizen and you wanna find out information about this city and the way that they're conducting themselves, the way they're spending your tax money, you have to file a legal request. And it was started under this administration. Where's the transparency in our government? If you're wondering why we voted yes on the referendum and now, three years later, the schools are closing, it's because we don't have transparency in the way that we're spending money.
All right. I appreciate the comment, but again, I am not the mayor or administration. I'm the council member.
You're the president of the council.
The transparency that you're talking about, I'm one of nine who vote. And like I said, fact-check the record and let's stick to the topic tonight of the Third District and not what administration should be going on.
All right. All right.
When you hosted the debate, you made the topic.
Let's go, let's go back to the questions. So there was a whole debate on that one. Let's move to what people in your district are telling you are their top priorities. And we will start with you, Ms. McBride, based on your conversations with voters, because I have seen you both walking the district. What is the top priority for people in your district and how will you address it?
Of course, crime has definitely been on everyone's radar. There are things that we definitely have to tackle, the root causes of those. And it does start in the home. It also starts with people understanding why are juveniles and our young children having guns? It is correct, where are they getting them from? And why are they not having a heart and a mind to protect their lives and care about another individual? That's one of the main things. The second is, of course, unfortunately, the school corporation closing. We have to now transition and work with the school corporation, in which we did sponsor a joint resolution with eight of the council members has passed that resolution. And also, I sponsored a resolution to keep all of the schools open in our district. So those are the top priorities.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan, the top priorities that you've heard from voters?
So again, as I stated in my four-one-one questions, our district is made up of four very unique spots. Miami Village, they're concerned about getting a community center because that Neighborhood Association has nowhere to meet. They're also very upset with the fact that the current leadership has been trying to dissolve them and push them into the Sore Neighborhood Association. So I support that independence. The next thing in the southeast is obviously crime. In the Third District, fifty-five murders of the hundred and forty-eight in the city that happened last year happened in the Third. Over a third of the murders happened in one district. We have six. So crime, obviously, has been the next thing. Schools, which is unfortunate, and I tell people that on the council, the only thing that we can do is push for an audit. We can ask how the money's being spent. We can make sure that transparency is prevailing at those levels, and also, we can call for the firing of people not doing their jobs. So again, that takes political courage. That takes somebody who's willing to step and cut against the grain. And I've showed the voters in this district, since I've been on the scene, that I'm willing to do that. I work well with others, but I work for the people first.
Thank you. And Ms. McBride, you have thirty seconds. I hope you'll respond. All right. Every candidate running does talk about investing in neighborhoods. We've seen that in the flyers. We've heard that this evening as people address this question. So what specific steps will you take to invest in your district and in the city as a whole, Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, again, I think we have a unique district to look at. Some of the district has lots that have been torn down from houses a thousand days. There are several lots in many of the neighborhoods where there's two, three, four of them, not typically big enough to build a high-rise, but enough to build several units, townhomes type. So what we've been doing is looking at overlays and mixed zone usage so that we can get creative with the type of housing that we pull into the neighborhoods while also keeping conforming. When I speak to the people in Riverside, their complaint is, there's a gentleman over there that wants to build seventy-five units straight up. And my question to them, when they asked me, what would I do if I voted, I responded with, what do you guys want? And so they were absolutely willing to work with the private investor to create homes in the district, but it has to be conformed to the neighborhood. So I'll work with private investment and public investment to make sure that we're spending responsibly and getting homes at a price point where people can actually afford, based on the data, not national data, but the data from here.
Ms. McBride, thank you. Again, the Third District grew by eighteen hundred people according to the last census. And in the same neighborhood, saw the reduction of vacant housing by a hundred units, specifically on the southeast side of town. I am proud to have been and continue to serve on the Sore and the 466 Works Board, along with Riley High School. Two homes have been built through the trade unit and fifteen from Sore Neighborhood. And one of the things that was discussed in the master plan that we helped the city true to is making sure that the working class stayed in the neighborhood and was allowed affordable housing. With that partnership was with First Source Bank, targeting people in the working class who had bad credit and worked to have their credit repaired so they could be able to stay on the southeast side of town and in those homes. And I'm proud that we have been doing that and what's more.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Duncan.
No need. Two houses have been built in the district. That's not enough. We need six thousand units of affordable housing. Right now, we're being told that a quarter of the units that are being built, fifteen hundred, that's about three hundred and seventy-five units of affordable housing in our city. We need six thousand. So at this rate, how long will it be before we get to that number, before we're adequately able to address the affordable housing problem? And yes, we do need mixed housing. Yes, there are people looking to move here that have high-income jobs, but I think we've created enough of those spaces for them. It's time to start looking at the people who are at home, who are local, and there's just been a lot of displacement. And what we're doing now isn't working in its entirety. We're getting units up, but it's not for the people who live here.
I think I would like to help, Mr. Duncan, out a little bit, because I didn't say two houses total. I said eighteen total, two was from Riley High School, a trading class. So they are proud that students are in our district and in that neighborhood building homes. So we're talking specifically about the Third District, and I don't think that question was talking about the city in general. So we are also landlords of buying vacant lots and using the city lots as infield to build and continue to build development in the Third District.
What is one issue you think people in your district should be thinking about more that we haven't touched on yet? This goes first to you, Ms. McBride.
Thank you. I think the corridors. I've been fighting for the corridors on Miami Street and Michigan Street for, since 2018, and not stopping now. Both of those corridors will actually, specifically the Miami corridor, has corridor funding. I've knocked for several years for businesses to invest because there's a matching grant that the city offers for them to invest and upgrade the facade of their facilities. So I'll continue to encourage them to use those dollars to beautify the neighborhood and bring businesses back into the corridor of the Miami Street. It also needs to be uplifted on Michigan Street. Coming in and out of town, it looks horrific on Michigan Street and some parts of town. So we need to make sure that there are vibrant spaces throughout the city, especially in the Third District.
Mr. Duncan?
I think the thing that you need to keep in mind is when you have leadership that's not present, you have leadership that's out of touch, you will get a district that feels like there's a duality to it. When I walked the district, a lot of people that are in Sunny Mead, that are in River Park, had no idea that the southeast and the Miami Village neighborhoods are part of the district, because it feels like you're entering into another city. The attention that has been paid over into those neighborhoods shows. They're beautiful, vibrant neighborhoods with auxiliary programs for their students, but it's not present anywhere else in the district. So again, if we want to better our city, we must look at every corner of the district and broaden that opportunity.
Ms. McBride, thirty seconds.
Yes, I would like to also educate Mr. Duncan again. Within the first ninety days of my appointment, I had a bus tour scheduled, and it went from the west side of the east side of the river to the west side of the river. And there's a stark difference between the two. And with that being said, there was talk from the River West Neighborhood Association, the Sunny Mead Association, that they would stop complaining about what was happening on the east side of the river, because they saw the tires dumped in yards. And I've been ever-present, and I'm gonna continue to be present. I don't just come from photo ops, and I just didn't start the work since this campaign.
Mr. Duncan, we heard already a little discussion of public safety. How safe do you think people in the Third District feel? And what would you do to make them feel even safer?
People in River Park just told us that they're a thousand percent safer than many of the other neighborhoods. But again, there's three, four pockets in our district. People in the southeast neighborhood will tell you, I'm scared to be outside of my house after, seven o'clock, after the sun goes down. So what I'll do as a councilperson is work with police. I'll work with mental health professionals. I will work to re-envision how we contact people in our neighborhood. I'm happy to see that the police department is fully staffed. I do agree that we could benefit from foot patrols, not just because citizens need to create relationships, but the police department needs to create relationships with the citizens. What we've noticed over the last couple months is mistaken identity from ShotSpotter, the technology that this administration voted in, in one state span. A young black man going to his car at night and being assaulted, and then on camera, police officers telling him, just a misunderstanding. Under my leadership, there will be no misunderstandings. There will be accountability, something that this administration lacks.
Ms. McBride, do you repeat the question? Yes. How safe do people in your District, District Three, feel? And what will you do to make them feel even safer?
District Three is very diverse. So there are some areas in District Three that do not need the attention that other areas need. Specifically, there's a vast and stark district, a difference between the east side and the west side, and that is not undeniable. However, lighting, that was one of the first things that I jumped on the ground running with, is light up South Bend and also take another step further in supporting changing out all of the lighting, not just in the district, but the entire city. Specifically, I've worked with Lieutenant Dom, and he went to every light pole in the Third District, identified those lights, and every light that was out, made sure that they were repaired. Also, Ms. White and I have been working with the engineering department, talking about alley cutbacks, and that is a program, a pilot program that has started, and we will continue to do so. And lastly, encouraging people to utilize the United Way Center as a safe place for their kids to come and also learn and have tutoring classes there as well.
Mr. Duncan, thirty seconds, if you'd like to use it.
Yeah, I think it's fantastic that we're putting up lights in the city, but the shootings are happening in broad daylight. So I don't know what LED lights at night is gonna change. Again, we're not getting to the root. We're not discussing the root of where the violence is coming from. A lot of the young men that are committing these acts look like me. They're in my age bracket, are younger, and they need people that are positive influences that are pulling the levers of power for them and their families. Right now, we know, we've talked about, the kids are lead poisoned, they're not learning how to read in the schools, and the answer that we're being given from everyone is more police. We have to invest in resources. We have to put politics second and people first. And that's what I'll do on May second after the election.
Thank you. Now we come to closing statements. We'll go here first from Mr. Duncan with thirty seconds on the clock.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Closing statement, thirty seconds.
My name is Drew Duncan. I'm running for city council in the Third District because it takes courage to put your name on the ballot. It takes more courage to hold the administration and the people who are supposed to be working for you accountable. I'm stepping up to do that. I'm stepping up so you can hold me accountable for the things that we want in our district. I understand that the mayor, nor the other eight votes on the council, run District Three. You do. This is the people's seat. May second, when you march to the polls and cast your ballot for me, we'll return it to you, and then we'll get to the real work of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McBride, your thirty seconds, please.
Thank you. I am dedicated to continue to build upon the work in progress in the Third District. Wherever there's growth, there's opportunity. Let's continue to build upon that growth. We have accomplished a lot, but have much, much more work to do. Let's continue to work together with contacting the Third District and give everyone a better quality of life, one block at a time. I ask for you to vote to reelection, McBride, on it before May second. Your vote matters and your vote counts. And if you see me, which everyone in the Third District, you know me, you see me, not just when it came to election time. So I am proud to serve the Third District and will continue to do so.
Thank you to our candidates. Trey Warner is running unopposed in the Fourth District, so we move on to District Five. All right. We will start with our opening statements by candidates running in District Five, and we will begin with Sherri Bowden Simpson, sixty seconds.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, everyone in the audience, for taking time out of your busy day to participate in democracy. Democracy is hard work. Thank you to League of Women Voters, St. Joseph Public Library, and American Democracy Project for providing a forum for us to share our vision of South Bend. My name is Sherri L. Bowden Simpson. I am a mother, a grandmother, a great-grandmother, and not great as in very good. I am the daughter of Ruth and Maxie Bowden, the best two parents that any child could want. If every child had one like them, it would be no problem. I lived in South Bend for sixty years. I've been in District Five for twenty-five years with my wonderful husband of thirty-eight years. I've seen the bad, the ugly, and the good of South Bend, because in my thirty-seven-year tenure with South Bend Community School Corporation, you see everything, but I am not deterred. I'm a candidate that brings, that will bring a positive change to this district. It's time for a change because it's been held by a Republican since nineteen sixty-five, Patrick, and I know that that's the real enemy, but we can change, and I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you. We will hear next from Patrick Ryder.
Well, thank you, everyone, for coming on a Friday evening at six to eight P.M. We know you all could be at El Cete right now drinking drinks and having dinner and decided to stay with us instead. I'd like to start by thanking the League and for the opportunity to be here. And perhaps, lighten the mood, thank my opponent Sherri, who I respect and have really enjoyed giving you a little bit. Love meeting fellow Democrats. My name is Patrick Ryder, and I'm running for South Bend Council in the Fifth District. I love South Bend. This is where I grew up. This is where I met my wife. This is where I work and where I've chosen to stay and raise our family. I graduated from Sac Bend, or, sorry, graduated from Washington High School. My wife Katie went to Riley. Both of my kids go to Marshall Elementary School, public schools, and we've lived in the district for about twenty years. I believe in the south side, and I believe deserves a strong voice and a seat at the table for planning our future. I'm a financial advisor, which gives me the opportunity to help families plan for their future. This is what I do every single day, and the future is always on my mind.
Thank you very much. And I just want to note that the candidates have been doing an excellent job keeping in time with those time cards, so I know that our timekeepers, James and Donnie, appreciate it, and so do I. All right. Question number one, based on your conversation with voters, what is the top priority issue for people in District Five and how will you address this issue? We start with you, Ms. Bowden Simpson.
Thank you. Well, as I've been out knocking on doors, and you know what makes me so proud of my district, because we live in a great district. We really do. And we don't have some of the problems that the other districts. What warms my heart is that they're not, oh, we're okay, and forgetting about others. They are concerned about the crime that's in other districts, and that's what has come up. They are concerned. I've come across voters, they're concerned about the public schools. They said, even though I don't have students in the public, in the public school, I really care about that. They are concerned about the homeless, and they are concerned, number one, about our mental health crisis. Every time I share with them my experience with my grandson, who had a mental health crisis, and how I had to call the police, and I thank God every day that he's still alive, I get a touch of that, the stories. So mental health, crime, and housing has been the top topics in District Five.
Thank you. Same question to you, Mr. Ryder.
Yeah, thank you, Sherri. Couldn't agree more. The doors that I've knocked, I've talked to people who, some of their biggest complaints are, well, there's a boarded-up house right next to me, and this has really hurt my property value. Additionally, like you mentioned homelessness, I'm glad you brought that up. You know, we were asked a question at one point about homelessness versus poverty, and I think, you know, those are completely two different things. The issue of homelessness derives from addiction and mental health. We have some resources right now to combat this. We've got the crisis center and motels for now. It's a good step forward. We can have a separate debate on whether or not these are flawless. We can have a separate debate on whether or not these are flawless solutions, but I would continue to support these initiatives and work with council to come up with even more to combat this.
Thank you. 30 seconds if you'd care to use it.
Yes, I'd like to talk about, more about the mental health crisis. I have been working with faith in Indiana well before I was even a precinct chairman. I am the precinct chairman, and I have gone down to the Rally for Care. And then, as a guidance director, we see that upfront and very personal. My colleagues here, Dr. Oliver Davis, Cynthia Harris, they labor with me in the vineyard of helping our children get through this.
Thank you. Question two, what differentiates you from your opponent? You've already established that you respect each other, but how are you different and why should people vote for you, Mr. Ryder?
Yeah, thank you. We have to go with, you know, communication and a common sense role. My priority, my number one priority is to serve this community to the best of my ability. You're not going to catch me up to your grandstanding or bickering with the other council members. Questions you're asking me tonight, I'm not even going to take a whole minute on some of them because I have respect for a lot of people in this audience and the person sitting next to me. So I've already met with quite a few council people, and the reality is that we see eye to eye on a lot of things as it is already. So I don't foresee that being a big issue in the future. If I'm faced with a challenge, I'm going to listen to all the arguments, I'm going to analyze the data, and I'm going to give an informed opinion. If I don't feel like it's right for my district, then I will politely disagree. We're all adults here, you know, this is what we've been elected to do, and I would always look into this.
Thank you, Ms. Bowden Simpson.
I'm old. 60, I would say 60. But with age, there comes something. I'm battle-tested. I've been a principal of an urban school, and so I do have to deal with bickering children and bickering adults, and I know how to do it. I know how to be the calm presence. I'm battle-tested, I'm used, I understand how to make complex decisions when you know that somebody's going to be mad and upset no matter what. I'm truly a union girl. My daddy back there, a bricklayer. My husband, a laborer. My son, an electrician. When I was a teacher in the union, I was in the union. I went on strike. I actually did not get paid trying to help, to lift us up. So I think what differentiates us, nothing against being young, it's nice being young, but there's something that comes with the experience and being battle-tested.
Perhaps when you look like you're in your 30s, you have to be ready.
I told you I'm a break ground off of real.
30 seconds, Mr. Ryder.
Well, Sheri, I'm glad that you answered, you need to be young. Other than that, I don't have a rebuttal.
Thank you, son.
All right, we move on to the next question, which will go first to Ms. Bowden Simpson. Candidates talk a lot about investing in our neighborhoods across the city. What specific steps will you take to invest in your district and the city as a whole?
Well, as I was knocking on doors and everything, I do remember a couple of residents were concerned that the south side does not have a park. And you know, that's why it's important to talk to people, because I don't have little children anymore, I have little grandchildren, but they don't, I was almost unaware of that. And by knocking on doors and saying, "Wow, that is, that is right." So we need to advocate for a park where children can play. I know we have the county grounds, but there's no swing set there. We have Hamilton, there's no swing set. And we used to have a swimming pool on York. I'll talk more about that, but why can't we have that? So we're concerned, that's something that we need to invest in. And I am very pleased, I can say this, I am pleased with the curb work that is being done on Miami, and I hope it moves down into the third, into the third district also.
Thank you. Mr. Ryder, specific steps that you will take to invest in your district and the city?
Yeah, so I think there actually is a pool in the Ridgeville area. Yeah, I mean, a new park on the south side would be definitely ideal, along with maybe some bike lanes. If my son can pick up a basketball and jump on his bike and ride it safely on some lanes all the way to a park and shoot hoops there, then I'm going to consider this a win. So that, along with affordable housing, you know, affordable housing is so necessary for our citizens. Most people in South Bend, either mortgage or rent is your, is your number one expense. And if you can't afford your mortgage or your rent, then this is your number one issue that we're talking about right now. I would first like to compliment the existing council on the work they did with affordable housing in this space because it's been, you know, really good step forward. And that was a huge win, you know, what is it, like 1,500 new homes, of which a quarter were subsidized? So that's, that's a huge win for us, but we need to pump those numbers up because we still need additional affordable housing, particularly on the south side itself.
Thank you, Ms. Bowden Simpson. 30 seconds if you'd like to use it.
And I want to agree about the housing because being a principal, and when you're hiring teachers that are on those low ranges, we'll talk more about that the first year, I see teachers that cannot afford a place to live. And so these are gainfully employed with, people with degrees that are struggling to find a place to live. And I think District Five would be a great place for some affordable housing.
Thank you. The next question is about a topic that you both have raised. As a person who represents a specific district, how will you balance that need to represent your district with the balance to represent the needs of the city as a whole? Mr. Ryder?
Hey, what's good for the city is good for District Five. You know, take Howard Park, for example. Do I wish Howard Park was on Ireland Road? Absolutely. It'd be a two-minute drive, right? But it's not. It's in the middle of the city where it belongs. Everyone has access to it, so it's a seven-minute drive for me. But we go there all the time, and, you know, the kids love it. So I would have never voted against a Howard Park simply because it wasn't brought up in my district. Another example also is Miami heading north, you know, before you get to, there's a Lincoln Way, so think over there like by St. Matthews. That is a nice little community there that's ripe for development. It's not in my district, but I would support that for sure, I mean, close to my district. That being said, my goal is to improve the quality of life on the south side. So we go back to, when we're talking about the bike lanes and parks, I'd love to see that happen.
Thank you. Ms. Bowden Simpson, representing your district versus representing the city as a whole?
Well, good communication is very important, and as I said in my response to the League of Women Voters, there's two sides of communication, and we know one side, we talk, but the other side is to listen, and to listen for experiences. What you think and what you do is generated from your experiences. And why we don't understand some of the decisions other people, that people make is because we don't understand their experience, and so we have to listen. As Patrick said, rising tides raises all vote, all votes. So I would never want to keep something from another district. You know, when you have multiple children, you know, sometimes one child needs a little extra, extra help, and you don't say, "Oh, no, we're going to be equal." No, we have to have equity. We have to have equity, and so you give that child what they need, when they need it, which might be a little more, and likewise, we have to do with our districts.
Thank you. Mr. Ryder, 30 seconds?
No, again, what I said the first time was perfect.
You do say so yourself. There you go. All right, so Ms. Bowden Simpson, you mentioned teachers, and we've already established this evening that the city council does not control the schools, but what specific steps do you think you could take as a member of the council to help out with the school corporation?
Well, first of all, since I have 37 years of experience in the South Bend Community School Corporation, been a math instructor at, I think, all the high schools, a guidance counselor, a principal, assistant principal, and a director of guidance, I could be the expert voice. A lot of things that are promoted to the public, they're not right. Just like saying a school has an F, and you think, "Oh, the teachers must be bad." No, that's not right. They are not bad. Our teachers run circles around other area teachers because we take everyone. So I will lend my voice, I will lend my expertise, I commend the council on that resolution that you made when they were closing schools. We have to keep the pressure on. We need to go to the State House and rally against these laws that is a war on public education. That's what I can do. Mr. Ryder?
Yeah, this issue really hits home for me. Like I mentioned before, I went to Washington, my wife Katie, okay, my wife Katie, she went to Riley, and both my son and daughter go to Marshall, and Katie is a fourth-grade teacher at Marshall. So when they get up in the morning, my whole family leaves and goes to public school. So here's the thing, I'm deeply invested in the school corporation. The voucher program has effectively devastated our public school, our public school system, and I pledged my support right here to commit every resource possible to the school corporation and bettering lives of our kids. This council has already proposed a committee to work alongside the school corporation, and if I get the chance, I would love to be on that committee to find a solution to increase in demand for the public schools so that we don't have to close anymore.
Ms. Bowden Simpson, 30 seconds.
I'd like to say I'm 1981 graduate of John Adams High School. Go Eagles! Yes, I want to just reiterate that I am an expert in this area, and I want to be on the council to lend my expertise to support our schools. So goes our public schools, so goes our city.
All right, Mr. Ryder, and last question before closing statements. What is one issue you think people in your district should be thinking about more when they head to the polls?
I mean, for me, it's got to be redevelopment. Development is paramount to the growth of our city, but this has to be done responsibly. There are two schools of thought on this. One is, you know, you let contractors take the lowest bid on every job, and, you know, hopefully that becomes, South Bend becomes a hub for development. The other school thought is, you focus on quality and safety, and that's where I land on this. So if we're giving out tax payments to developers and contractors, they're going to have to make a promise to use local bonded labor that will present the highest level of safety and quality. It doesn't make sense to do these jobs, if in 10 years' time, you know, our structures are crumbling.
Thank you. Ms. Bowden Simpson, an issue that is important to you that you think should also be important to voters?
Well, I'm going to go with what Patrick was talking about because you brought back a memory to me. See, my daddy was a, he was a bricklayer, and he would tell me about bids, and I'd heard about that real young. You didn't get the, they didn't get the bid? That meant he might not be working. And so I understand about bids, and we do, I agree with you, we need a responsible bid, not a responsive bid. And that means we need to vet these companies to make sure that they have a history of living up to their promises. Do they even have equipment to, to create these structures? Now, we already got this bad situation over on Colfax where the man said he was going to have a grocery store. You see how that happened, and we need to hold those companies, investment companies, responsible when they fail to meet their obligation. So I'm for good union jobs because that's going to lift people out of poverty and have quality work. So we were on one accord there.
Thank you. Probably no rebuttal, but there are 30 seconds on the table if you need it, Mr. Ryder.
Yes, now go ahead.
All right, then we do go to closing statements. We are going to hear first from Sheri Bowden Simpson, 30 seconds.
Well, as I said, I'm Sheri Bowden Simpson, and I believe that South Bend could be a city on a hill, a place, a saving, caring place where everyone can thrive. I really believe that. Don't think I'm pie in a sky, this is, this is true. You see, love is strong, and I come from a place of love, and I don't want you to think that that means weakness, that means strength, that means being strong while other people are crumbling under some kind of oppression. So vote for me if you want strength, love, and an old lady that doesn't look old.
Now for your closing statement, Patrick Ryder.
Well said, Sheri. Thank you again for inviting me to speak today. My name is Patrick Ryder. I am running for South Bend Council in the fifth district. I love this community. It's where I was raised, it's where I've chosen to raise my family. South Bend has a strong future, and the south side of South Bend is an important part of that. I know we have big problems to solve, but I'm happy to work to create a stronger community for the future, and I know we can accomplish this together.
Thank you to both of our District Five voters. You have heard several times people refer to a candidate questionnaire that they completed for the League of Women Voters platform, Vote 411. American Democracy Project was happy to partner with the league to make that possible. You can read about all of these candidates, the other contested candidates, the uncontested Democratic candidates running in this race, but also the Republican candidates who don't face challenges during the primary, but will be running in the fall. So we were thrilled to have 100% participation rate from all municipal candidates here in the city of South Bend, so you can go to vote411.org to hear more about those candidates. And now we move to District Six, and our candidates are Bruce Mitchell and Sheila Niesgatsky. All right, we will start with our one-minute opening statements, and we will hear first from you, Bruce Mitchell.
First, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Thank you, Sheila, for accepting this debate. I know we had one scheduled a couple of weeks ago. I don't know what happened with that one, but we're here today. I want to thank everybody for being here. Like she said, I'm Bruce Mitchell, Iraq War veteran, the founder of the BU movement, BU. When you think of BU, I'm actually the founder of a movement that accepts somebody being themselves. I mean, I encourage individuality. That's diversity. When you think of the sixth district, diversity, the sixth district is very diverse, and I feel like I represent that. I'm half-black and Mexican, but not only that, I was raised in the sixth district. I lived here all my life. I understand the, what, the diversity, not only in just race, but the diversity in the circumstances that lead to success, and the diversity in the circumstances that can lead to crime. And I feel like with my opponent being a millionaire, there's certain things that you just don't understand or can't get or can't grasp, or just the lifestyle of a millionaire just doesn't reflect, or the understanding of the lifestyle of a millionaire would reflect affordable housing and things like that. And I feel like the policy that you created in the last 40 years has also reflected that you don't understand affordable housing, how to curb crime and things like that as well in the community.
Thank you. Ms. Niesgatsky.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the American Democracy Project, and the St. Joe Library for hosting this evening's event. My name is Sheila Niesgatsky. And looking back and reflecting on the last three years of public service, while serving as an elected official for the South Bend sixth district, I believe that much has been accomplished. We work together with my fellow council members and the administration, which we now have a roadmap that is setting the city on a pace of prosperity and of equal equity for all of our neighborhoods. The rebuilding our streets program has resulted in our streets being repaid that have not been touched in years. Upgrading our streetlights with over 10,000 new energy-saving LED lights is helping to provide safer neighborhoods and to lighten our carbon footprint. We also now have a fully funded and fully staffed police department. I am experienced, dedicated, and a veteran of foreign wars. police department. I am experienced, dedicated, and a veteran of foreign war. Service to my country has set my path toward serving our community. It has been my honor to represent the sixth district, and I'm asking for your vote on May second. Thank you.
Thank you. We go now to question one. And as I did with the candidates in other districts, I want to ask you about top priority issues for people in your district. So as you've been having conversations with voters, what is the top priority issue for people in the sixth district, and how will you address it, Mr. Mitchell?
In my sixth district, the top priority is crime. We have area beautification. We have affordable housing issues. In my sixth district, affordable housing is not affordable housing to the, from the people that I hear from in my sixth district. Area beautification is not up to par whatsoever. While I was canvassing, knocking on doors, I had to walk in the street because the sidewalks were so cracked up and broken. In my sixth district, crime is not curbed or solved by adding cameras. Cameras and catching somebody in the act or after it happened is a reaction. I'm here to, I'm trying to be proactive. And catching somebody after something happens is not solving anything. So I think that in my sixth district, the issues of crime, area beautification, affordable housing, a lot of other things, but I'm going to stick with those.
Thank you. Ms. Niesgatsky.
Thank you for the question. What I'm hearing with, as I've been canvassing, is a lot of what our prior candidates have talked about. But the biggest thing I actually hear about is our curbs and sidewalks and alleyways. Those are probably the number-one complaints that I have as a councilwoman and as I've been canvassing. There is a lot of chatter as well, where we talk about crime, shootings, how are kids getting these guns? That's a number-one thing I'm asked as well. Where are they getting the guns? Where are they getting the drugs? I can't answer that. I don't know where they're getting those guns. I wish I did, because if I did, we wouldn't have them in this city anymore. But it's really back to the basic things, curbs and sidewalks. And I will agree, there are parts of the district that have displaced sidewalks. And I believe that the council allocation program, at one point, they had increased our allocation where we could double the amount that we've done. And I'm going to advocate that again in this upcoming budget so that we have more flexibility to fix the areas of our district that we know need fixing.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, thirty seconds.
Yeah, I actually, I seen on her mailer, she spent twenty-nine million dollars on roads, yet still went through the sixth district, Sample Street being one of the main roads, and I almost caught a flat tire going down those roads. I actually went and made about ten videos throughout the sixth district and showing and exposing the sidewalks and the roads all around the sixth district. So you think a twenty-nine million dollars, a twenty-nine million dollars got a few roads fixed. I could have done a lot more with twenty-nine million dollars for the things that actually need to be solved in my sixth district.
The next question will go first to Ms. Niesgatsky. We've already heard your opponent start to differentiate himself from you as he sees it. But what differentiates you from your opponent, and why should people vote for you?
While I'm a proven leader, and I answer to my constituents. When a resident calls me, it's just about me taking the call and writing it down and directing them to the person that could help them, meaning one of the departments in the city. I actually go out, I drive there, I engage with them, I talk with them. I get a hands-on look at what the issue is, and I try to resolve it. Because just deferring them to somebody and saying, yep, they have an issue, no. Take that picture, have that engagement. Then you also get a sense of other concerns that they may have in the neighborhood. And then you gain a consensus of the heartbeat on your district. So I am very engaged with the people that I represent.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah, the district has thirteen thousand people that's registered to vote. She was only able to pull out six hundred votes last time. That's not right. We have to represent the majority. Six hundred is nowhere near the majority of the district. So we have to figure out, what are we doing? What are we not doing to get these people out? Black, brown, white, anybody. They're just not, we have the lowest voter turnout. I'm here to make that change. No.
Ms. Niesgatsky, thirty seconds. Okay, let's move on to the next question. And the next question is about investing in neighborhoods. What specific steps will you take to invest in neighborhoods within the sixth district, as well as any ideas you have about investment in the city as a whole? Mr. Mitchell.
Well, a lot of this thing, status and influence, use influence. You know, I'm out in the community. She was saying that she's door-to-door. Last five years with my BU movement, I've done five, every year in the last five years, I've done Christmas events for low-income families in the second and sixth, in the city of South Bend. Five, you're talking Christmas events, every year Thanksgiving events, events for mothers, low-income mothers, events for almost anything that's poor. I'm closer to poor than rich. That's why I understand. That's why I'm here. And I think a lot of people in the sixth district are closer to being poor than they are being rich. And I know, coming from the bottom, how to solve some of these issues because that's what I actually struggle with. Millionaires don't have these issues, and that's why six hundred votes out of thirteen thousand, that's why we're here today.
Ms. Niesgatsky.
Yeah, could you repeat the question?
Yes. What steps will you take to invest in the neighborhoods, in the sixth district, and in the city as a whole?
Thank you for the question. The Rum Village Neighborhood Association now has a neighborhood plan. That plan took a year in the makings to work. That was working with the neighbors, the administration, and the city departments. Talked about traffic calming, the type of residential housing they would like to see, and the development in their neighborhood. And that is a twenty-year plan. It wasn't something I decided. It was something that we worked together with. So I believe that those neighborhood plans are vital to moving areas of your district forward. It gives them a roadmap to how that development is going to look. So for Rum Village, they're starting with the parks. Two-point-three million dollars in Walker Field is going to be invested in saving a WPA building there that is historic, as well as investment and connectivity to Rum Village Park. So I really think it starts there, when you want to look at the crooks of how do people see their neighborhoods, and what investment do they want to see? If you ask them, they'll tell you. Thank you.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Mitchell.
That's me fine. Thank you, Oliver Davis, for initiating the Walker Field and those projects getting started and fixed when we were in the seat prior to this.
Thank you. We'll go now to the next question. It will go first to you, Ms. Niesgatsky. And it is that some candidates running in South Bend GAs for election seem to focus a lot on progress the city has made, and others seem to focus more on problems the city faces. Which comes closer to your view about the current state of South Bend? Is the glass half-empty or half-full?
Well, I'd say both. There's been significant investment in the city of South Bend. I believe it's close to half a billion dollars. It's unprecedented. But then you also have parts of the city that are underserved. And there are parts of my district where the neighborhoods are great, and then there's parts of my district where they're not so great. So I would say that glass half-full can go either way.
Mr. Mitchell.
Pretty much all of my district is not great. Her area of the district is great. My area of the district, I see, I'm attending these vigils, I'm hosting these vigils, I'm out here with these people that are affected by a lot of these issues. So I don't see what it is she sees. That it could be her neighborhood, or it could be millionaire status, or, I'm not certain. I'm not seeing these things.
Ms. Niesgatsky, thirty seconds. You choose to use it.
I would just like to say I have lived in my home that we bought for fifty-five thousand dollars for twenty-four years now. I don't know any other, anybody else, including myself, that is a millionaire. I believe we are here to talk about what it is that you are going to do if you are to be elected as the councilperson for the district, and we are not here to tear each other down.
Let's go to the next question. Both of you mentioned that when you were walking near a district, people talked about crime. In your view, how safe is our city? How safe is your district? And what can you do to make people in the city, and specifically in your district, feel safer? Mr. Mitchell?
Well, I don't feel like you're supposed to put cameras everywhere, trying to play the I'm going to get you game. That's going to, people have crimes shift to other areas. I think what we need to do is actually leave from the front. That's actually getting on the ground, boots on the ground, same boots I wore in Iraq. The ones I wore in the communities with BU and all these others, you have to actually be on the ground, not making orders from the TV or from the news. You actually have to be out here and see why it is from the people, what's making them want to commit these crimes. Just trying to catch them all the time, that's not solving anything. You have to actually go to the people, not the actual ones that actually in the act, but the ones where you know that these things are ruined, in the school systems, the kids that have behavioral issues. Are we trying to talk to these students first and not create programs, create opportunity for them, or are we just trying to punish them once they do something disruptive? We have to understand where the chaos come from. When they get off that bus and see chaos, and the only thing that they see borderly is in school, they're going to go to school and try to learn under the chaos that they are comfortable with.
Ms. Niesgatsky.
I would say again, where are all the guns coming? How are these kids getting ahold of these guns? We are now, we don't need a permit to carry anymore. So there's nowhere to even track on who has purchased a gun, or if you want to have a permit to carry. You don't even need one. Police department, they can't even ask somebody if they have a gun because now that's against law to do that. So that just baffles me. But I would say, you know, we have a fully-staffed police department. We have shot spotters. We have a flock system. We do have a real-time crime center. And now you can register your ring doorbells with the police department. These are tools for the police department to use to help fight crime. But my biggest thing is these guns off the street. It's just like, you might as well be born and have somebody give you a gun. Because I believe that's how many are out in our community. I wish there was a way that I could have a better answer for that, but I really, I really don't.
Mr. Mitchell, thirty seconds.
Yeah, I agree. I hate that the guns are out here, but that's not anything that we can actually solve. I'm here to actually prevent those things. And preventing them is not by adding more police and having full staff and having shot spotters. That's, once again, catching after the fact. I'm here to actually prevent these things. The way you prevent them is give balance. If we're going to have guns, a plethora of guns, then we need to have the same amount of community centers, the same amount of recreation centers to be able to balance out some of these issues, or some of these things that these kids or youth are playing with. Right now, all they have is guns. There is no other opportunities or resource centers in some of these districts. And we have to cross side towns, go to another one. That's the issue right there.
Thank you. We're, I'm going to ask you next question that pertains to the two of you that does not apply to all of the districts, and that is that both of you are veterans who served the country in foreign wars. How if at all do you think your experience and decision to join the military reflects, affects your decision to serve here at a local level? We start with you, Ms. Niesgatsky.
Well, it's about dedication to your community. Both of us served. That's dedication to your country. When you do that, that's a piece of you that you're willing to give up for everyone, whether you know them or you don't know them. And so coming back and serving your community is just another piece of that puzzle. I'm sure my opponent, as well as myself, feel that it's about giving back. It's about giving back to the community. It's about loving one another again. And for me, in the district I represent, I love the sixth district. My family, when we immigrated to this country, settled in the sixth district. I'm the first born American on my father's side. So I believe that a lot of that dynamic, because Vietnam was my dad, my dad was World War II, I was in Desert Shield, Desert Storm, and my nephew was in Afghanistan. So it's really about commitment to the community. It's a one-hundred percent buy-in for commitment to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you for your service and all of your family's service. That's one thing I don't debate against or play with. Thank you for your service. Can you ask the question one more time?
Yes. How does it affect or reflect your decision to serve here at the local level?
When I answer that call, it's my selfless service. Still today, it's selfless service. I don't know what's going to come before me. I don't know what the next challenge is at the end of it. But more than anything, what I do know is that I'm here to serve, no matter what capacity that's, throughout this campaign, you know, I've been canvassing, you know, I've been, you know, doing things in the community with my BU movement. But no matter what, I still, where I'm supposed to be, at these vigils, at these shootings and things like that. So no matter what, the dedication to actually serve all, not just a specific group of people, a specific side of the district, a specific demographic, but actually serve. And that's what I take with me then and still to today.
Thank you. We will, assuming no rebuttal on that question, we will move to the next question, which is, what is one issue you think people in your district should be thinking more about when they head to the polls on or before May second? Something we haven't discussed yet tonight that's central to your campaign and critical to the future of your district. Ms. Niesgatsky.
Well, I would just say, I roll up my sleeves and just get the work done. I'm not out there doing photo ops. I don't go out there and seek the fame and a lot of the other things that some people have talked here about this evening. It's really about just being committed to the community, being engaged, and making sure overall that we are investing in our neighborhoods. That's my number-one thing. I campaigned on four years ago. There's still a disparity in our neighborhoods. It's nothing that's going to be fixed in four years, probably from now. We'll probably still be talking about our neighborhoods, but I think that that is vital for that investment.
Mr. Mitchell.
I think the biggest thing that people have to understand with me is you're going to get transparency. I'm actually out here. My number is public information. I'm at everything. This is no thing for no photo op. This is no, this is actually caring on the ground. I'm on the ground. So this is what people need to understand, is that you're getting transparency, something like never before. You know, when you have transparency, that's the word, transparency. I'm actually out here. I don't make broken promises. I have a proven record as well. And my record actually involves the community, actually involved with the community, not from a desk hoping and wishing things just happen. I'm out here with solutions.
Thank you. Thirty seconds if you need it, Ms. Niesgatsky. All right, we move now to closing statements, and we will hear first from Bruce Mitchell.
Like again, once again, my name is Bruce Mitchell. I hope that you guys vote for me on May second. Why? Because the sixth district is diverse. I represent the sixth district. I am in the sixth district, the everyday sixth district. The crime that happens in the sixth district, I'm there. Affordable housing in the sixth district, I'm not just talking about it on the news, or, I'm actually family members, or I'm friends, and actually comforting some of these people that have these actual issues. This is not just something that's on television for me. I'm actually out here talking to people every single day with my BU prior to politics. This is just something that I know there was a duty, an obligation of mine, because once I've gained the amount of knowledge and experience that I've had, the alternative of not running was having the same system in place for the next four years.
Thank you very much, and thank you to both of our District Six candidates. Oh, my gosh! Bruce, thank you, Oliver. I was already thinking about a photo op that we, that photo op that we'll have time for with all the candidates. All right. I do apologize, Councilwoman. Please provide your closing statement.
Thank you. It's been my honor to serve the residents of the sixth district for the past three and a half years. I believe much has been accomplished, and I would like to continue the service and the work for the residents in the district. It wasn't twenty-nine million dollars, but it was two-point-three million dollars that has been invested in our streets in the sixth district, and over five hundred thousand dollars invested in curbs and sidewalks. I'm experienced, dedicated, and committed to our community. I will continue to be a strong voice for the residents that I represent. So tonight, I'm asking for your vote, and consider voting for me on May second. Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for coming this evening.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you to all the candidates. Candidates, if you could just quickly come up, we'll have our photographer do a quick picture. I want to note for voters and campaign organizers, please do encourage people to go to Vote 411. We'll also link videos of the various debates and forums that we've hosted, which included the mayoral debate candidates who were running at large, and these district candidates, as well as the clerks race. And one-hundred percent participation in the debates for contested primary candidates, one-hundred participant participation for all candidates for the Vote 411 candidate questionnaire. So I am just, I think we should give all of the candidates a round of applause for being so successful to tell voters we're here today.
All right, this is our official.
Hi. I would love if you guys could come in front of the podium so I can see your whole outfits. And if you guys just want to line up?
Yeah.
Pose, do whatever you will. Line up so I can see everyone. That would be great. If you guys want to do a separate kind of event.
And then I guess members join us, be your candidate literature, and then go to the H2.
You're hiding a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all right. You know, go with that.
One, two, three. I'm going to do a couple. Keep smiling. Keep being cute. Great job, guys. Excellent. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you all for turning out.
I think the first one?
Uh-oh, look at this, sis. Crime rate is too low. Did anybody even monitor?
I don't think we did.
Is this still on? Thank you. Thank you all for watching this live stream.